Good evening and welcome to the opening of our public meeting and our work session for Suffolk City School Board, October 9th, 2025. This meeting is called to order. At this time, we need a motion to go into a closed session.
Madam, I make a motion.
A motion is needed to go into a closed meeting to discuss the following item and subject pursuant to the Virginia Freedom of Information Act, found in Virginia Code Section 2.2-3711, Record Review 2024/25-2RR, regarding the assignment of a student to Turlington Wood School, whether discussion in an open meeting would involve disclosure of information contained in the student's scholastic record, which is authorized by the Virginia Freedom of Information Act, found in Virginia Code Section 2.2-3711A2.
Thank you. Now, I'll entertain a motion.
Madam, I make a motion that we go into the closed session.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, the motion was made by Board Member Brittingham and seconded by Vice Chair McGee. Is there a discussion? There being none, we are ready to vote.
Board members, please vote. Board Member Dr. Brittingham?
Yes.
Board Member Fields?
Yes.
Board Member Jenkins? Board Member Sling Love?
Yes.
Vice Chair McGee?
Yes.
Board Chair Howell?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Thank you. As a reminder, you can only take your Chromebooks back there. You need to leave your personal devices to include cell phones, watches, and personal laptops out here with Ms. Gardner and Mrs. Johnson. Good evening again. This meeting is called back into order. At this time, we need a certification of the closed meeting.
Resolution of certification of the closed meeting of October 9th, 2025 pursuant to Section 2.2-3712 of the Code of Virginia, whereas the School Board of the City of Suffolk convene a closed meeting on this date pursuant to an affirmative recorded vote and in accordance with the provisions of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act. And whereas Section 2.2-3712 of the Code of Virginia requires a certification by the School Board that such closed meeting was conducted in conformity with Virginia law. Now therefore be it resolved that the School Board of the City of Suffolk hereby certifies that to the best of each member's knowledge, number one, only business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements by Virginia law were discussed in the closed meeting, to which this resolution of certification applies. And number two, only such public business matters as were identified in the motion convening the closed meeting were heard, discussed, or considered by the School Board of the City of Suffolk.
Thank you, Attorney Waller. At this time, I'll entertain a motion to certify the closed meeting.
Madam Chair?
Yes, ma'am.
I move that we certify the closed session.
Okay.
Second.
Okay. The motion was made by Board Member Brittingham and seconded by Board Member Sling Love. Is there any discussion? There being none, we're ready to vote.
Board members, please vote. Board Member Dr. Brittingham?
Yes.
Board Member Fields?
Yes.
Board Member Jenkins?
Yes.
Board Member Sling Love?
Yes.
Vice Chair McGee?
Yes.
Board Chair Howell?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Thank you, ma'am. Next up, we have a presentation again regarding the school administrative to the Riverbend project that was brought before September 11th. So at this time, I will yield the floor to Dr. Gordon so he can invite our city manager and staff up.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm going to call to the podium Mr. Kevin Hughes, interim city manager. This is a continuation, as Chair Howell stated earlier, to include some similar information that you all have received, but also you will see trends for student generation rate, as well as a five to 10-year kind of projection and the overall impact of some of the schools that are associated with the Riverbend project. So with that being said, Mr. Hughes, I will turn it over to you.
There we go. I'll go again. So thank you, Mr. Superintendent, Madam Chair, Mr. Vice Chair, School Board members. Good evening. So we are back with you again on this unique proposal in front of you. Wanted to provide some additional information as it relates to the student generation, as well as some data that we've seen as it relates to maybe similar projects to paint you a picture as what we're seeing from a student generation with higher density, mixed-use level projects. And so Kevin Wine, our Planning and Community Development Director, will walk you through a few slides here. And I'll come up at conclusion and talk a little bit about the resolutions I think you have in your package that you're considering later this evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Manager, Dr. Gordon, Board Chair Howell, Vice Chair McGee, and members of the School Board. Thank you for allowing us this opportunity to come back. My goal this evening is to spend more time breaking down some what we've witnessed and observed kind of in the field with similar developments in the past as it relates to school generation rates and touch on some of the factors on why those tend to differ from one place to another in the city based on the development type. So with that being said, I'll briefly touch and just offer a quick refresher on the development that is Riverbend. It's an 89-acre site that is located along North Main Street, immediately south of the Obese Place Development, which is a mixed-use development in the city. Currently, it's zoned B2, all 89 acres. There's a small portion owned by the EDA that's subject to the request, but that is zoned MUD. The applicant proposes, in this case, to take 72 of those acres and rezone them to RU18. Ultimately, this would allow for the construction of 497 residential units. That includes 329 townhome units and 168 age-restricted multifamily units. 17 acres of the site would be preserved. That would allow for some B2 development to occur on the front end to include some commercial and office use along North Main Street. And the hope is for a waterfront, marina, clubhouse, and potential restaurant along the Nansmert River. So here is the conceptual master plan provided in support of the application. I'll see if I can. Here, we have that 2.3-acre site that I highlighted there. That is what they are proposing to convey to the city to ultimately be utilized as the administration building. You have what would be up front here, some residual B2, commercial zoning back here, the marina site. And then you have your 168 age-restricted multifamily units, with the rest being townhome units. So just a quick reminder, as it relates to the school proffers on this site, the applicant is proffering in lieu of a normal cash contribution to advance capacity to the schools impacted by this development. They are proposing to convey that 2.3-acre site previously used as the VDOT admin building. That property and building valued at $100 million used as the V dot admin building. That property and building valued at six-point-two-seven million dollars for the future use of the Suffolk Public Schools Administration Building. The property would be conveyed, like I said, in lieu of advancing capacity for the schools impacted by this development proposal, specifically impacts to Hillpoint Elementary School and Kings Fork High School. If they were to provide us with a cash contribution instead of the conveyance of the building, it would be four-point-seven million dollar cash contribution to the city, ultimately to be utilized for CIP projects as it relates to schools. The CIP does include a twenty-two million dollar project for the construction of the school admin building currently. So wanted to take a moment to walk you through how we calculate school impacts as it relates to development in the city. This is a calculation that was ultimately provided to us based on real neighborhood data that was conducted as part of the R R M M school study that was conducted back in 2020. So taking those rates, we codify that, put it in our Unified Development ordinance, and as it relates to this development, you have four hundred and ninety-seven units. Hundred and sixty-eight of those are age-restricted, so those come out of the balance, leaving us with three hundred and twenty-nine units. And then we have the multipliers for each school. In this case, the elementary school, it's a multiplier of point one eight per unit. For the middle school, it is a point one per unit. So every ten units generates one school student. And then at Kings Fork High, in this case, the high school level, it's a multiplier of point one three. So what does that look like? When we multiply the unit number versus the multiplier, in this case, at Hillpoint, a U D O generation rate of sixty elementary school students, at the middle school level, thirty-three, and at the high school level, forty-three. So what is the current condition of the schools? Presently, the functional capacity set by Suffolk Public Schools, which is important, ultimately, that's the number you all do utilize, that differs from what we do in the U D O, and significantly lower at the elementary school level and the high school level, pretty similar at the middle school level. But to identify that capacity, as it relates to development, we utilize the U D O number there in the second column. But the functional capacity set by Suffolk Public Schools at the elementary school level, eight hundred and seventy-three at Hillpoint. I believe that may have dropped to eight fifty, but still around that ballpark. Kings Fork Middle School, and then at Kings Fork High School, two thousand and eighty-four. Here are U D O capacity numbers, seven nineteen at Hillpoint, eleven sixty-nine at Kings Fork Middle, and then sixteen eighty-eight at the high school level. So as of the most recent enrollment here, we have Hillpoint Elementary School, seven hundred and seventy-seven students, Kings Fork Middle School, nine seventy-nine, and Kings Fork High School, sixteen fifty-one. So with projected development, projected development being the development that has gone past at least a rezoning approval and has received plan approval with the city, we throw those projected generation rates into our overall calculation. Development comes on at different times. It wouldn't come on overnight, but based upon plans that have been approved that are served by each of these schools, this could be the potential enrollment that these schools may see in the future. So Hillpoint, eight seventy-eight, Kings Fork Middle, ten forty-five, and Kings Fork High School, seven thirty-nine. So some trends that we have seen over the last fifteen years as it relates to development throughout the city, population growth, and its impact on the school system. I wanted to outline this, just to kind of highlight how we have continued to grow, but for the most part, the school enrollment has been relatively stagnant. You see in 2010 about eighty-five hundred residents, or eighty-five thousand residents Suffolk-wide. We had almost thirty-one thousand households across the city at that time. The school population was fourteen thousand five oh seven. This is in 2010. Twenty-twenty, probably not the best year to talk about school enrollment. Obviously, we did have the COVID pandemic, but that did drop fourteen thousand three twenty-two. Over that time, we had gained ten thousand folks across the city in population and nearly eight thousand new household units. Present day, our population is just south of a hundred and four thousand residents citywide, nearly forty thousand households citywide, and the school age population has bounced back from the pandemic low there to levels very similar to where they were in 2010. So we are fortunate enough to have some neighborhood data as it relates to some developments that meet the profile of what's being proposed at Riversbend, which is a more age-targeted community based on the product types that they've built elsewhere, one of which is part of this data that I'll share with you. But depending on how they're marketed, depending on where they're located, depending on the lifestyle in which the development is trying to cultivate, we've noticed that they do not tend to generate schoolchildren at the same rate as single-family homes throughout the city. Single-family homes certainly do, but when you have apartments, townhomes, they just don't tend to hit that level, particularly if they're some sort of age-targeted product. So when it comes to Obese Place, this is a twenty, or two-hundred-and-twenty-four unit apartment complex just next door, so it also goes to all three schools that this development would go to. We have a U D O generation rate there on the left-hand column, thirty-six, eighteen, and sixteen. That is what they would be forecasted based on our Unified Development Ordinance. But the actual student generation rate of this development is on your right. You have eighteen students at the elementary school level, the middle school, four, and then the high school, eleven. The Point at Harborview, that's up in the north end of the city, so not sharing the same schools, but what's interesting, the hundred townhomes that are part of this development are very similar to the ones that are proposed as a part of the Riverbend development. So in this case, the U D O suggested they were going to generate sixty-six students at the middle school level, thirty-four, and at the high school level, thirty-four. However, in all actuality, they generated twenty-two at the elementary level, at the middle school level, five, and at the high school, five. Lastly, another townhome development, slightly older, but in the Hillpoint community. So once again, the same schools are impacted here. The U D O suggested twenty-three elementary school students, thirteen middle, and seventeen high, and then in actual, in all actuality, ten elementary school students, four middle, and then seven high school students. So the purpose there is just to really highlight our generation rates as outlined within the Unified Development Ordinance. They're not a forecast model. They are a tool that helps us try to get an idea of where school enrollment may be based upon where development's been happening and how it's been occurring, but certainly not a forecast model by any stretch of the imagination. So where do we go from here? Our Planning Commission did consider this item at their meeting this past month in September. Ultimately, they have deferred action on that, and they will reconsider it at their October twenty-first meeting. Provided that the Planning Commission takes action at their twenty-first meeting, it would go before City Council, before public hearing at their November nineteenth meeting. That concludes the information I provided. I'll turn it back over to interim city manager Hughes.
Thank you, Kevin. So just to kind of wrap things up here, obviously, this is a new, unique proposal. I can't think of a time when the city staff has presented on a project like this in front of the school board, and I've been here about twenty years. Obviously, the twenty twenty-five, twenty-six capital improvement plan does request a future school admin building. That's pushed into the out years, year thirty-one, thirty-five, with four or five other school replacement projects, and so there's a competition that will have to occur in those later years. Total, it's projected to be about twenty-two million dollars, and we know that there's a need at the school admin facility. It is outgrown, its need or use for the school administration, and we know there's some issues that occur from time to time with the landlord as well. What we've seen with the recently passed twenty-six, twenty-seven CIP from the school board acknowledges that there is an opportunity here at the Riverbend project with the V dot location and the potential redevelopment of that site. Mr. Wine's presentation outlines that there are some challenges with this development. We don't deny that. However, there is a significant solution that comes along with it as well, again, one that is fairly unique to us all. Again, we are here to request formal consideration by the school board and guidance and direction as it relates to your interest in moving forward with taking the proposal that's in front of you or proposed for the school admin facility. We thank you for your consideration. I know it's on your regular agenda, some resolutions on there. Wanted to also provide a little bit of intel and guidance as it relates to the resolutions that are under consideration. So the resolution one that we've had a chance to review looks to kind of keep it simple, and we think that that lends itself for a quick understanding, and so we understand that fully. Resolution two is one that we find problematic. As a Dillon Rule state, we receive our authority from the Commonwealth of Virginia and the General Assembly, as you do as well, and we do not have the ability to negotiate or force conditions upon the developer as it relates to the phasing that's mentioned in there. And so we would interpret, if that resolution is passed, is essentially that you do not support the project because we cannot force those phases that are mentioned in there. The developer's the only party who's able to bring phasing requests in via proffer, and we have to accept those. We don't have the ability to negotiate or force those on them. Oftentimes, that's a thought that a lot of folks, we have the ability to force things at our level, but we do not. The state does not allow us to do that. So I want to make sure that that was clear as you consider what's in front of you. And again, we're here to answer any additional questions you may have. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Mr. Hughes. I'm going to let my colleagues go first. I do have questions and comments, but I will give them the floor first. So if anyone has comments, questions, suggestions, just light up your mic for me or wave. Board Member Slinglove?
I was going to wait for everybody else to start. I have a couple of different questions, and some would be for Dr. Gordon, also some for you, Mr. Hughes, and thank you for your presentation and for coming back here again tonight. I'm sure you have other things you'd like to be doing. With regards to the proffers, I'm still hung up on the proffers a little bit because in the presentation again tonight, the proffers would be in exchange for conveyance of a building. Can you unpack that a little bit more for me to clearly state what the convey, who's, what is being conveyed, under what terms? Because I've heard a few different things that have regarding what that money was going to do. So can you unpack that a little bit, please?
So what is being proposed via the proffer is, I believe, two-point-three acres. That would include the V dot administrative building. That would be dedicated to the City of Suffolk at their first plat submittal. They would subdivide that parcel, including the building, and then we would take ownership of it, the way the proffer is written.
Okay, so the city would take ownership of that property. Okay, that wasn't clear last time.
The building and the two-point-three acres that sit on the building.
Okay, the point that I'm making is last month, there was a discussion about purchasing the building later down the road. So that's where I was confused because if you're, if you're giving up proffers money for the students, and it was clear to me that it was being conveyed, which to me was transitioning ownership to the city, then what you're saying now is that the city will own that building and have to renovate it, but...
So we spent a little bit of time going back and forth, really as it relates to a potential strategy to move the school board in there. Probably doesn't do a whole lot of good to dig into that, but essentially, the ownership, whether it be day one or days down the road, will be the city's ownership for the school board administration to be operational in that space.
Okay. All right, then I had a, may I ask a couple more questions? Okay. I had another question, and it was for, more for Doc, actually, I'll ask him while he's talking. The three properties that you had shared or that were shared tonight that were similar, how old are those three properties, the ones that have, we have the actual data versus the U D O projections?
They're all very new. So Obese Place is the project adjacent to it, so that's less than ten years old. The Point at Harborview is brand new. I think they're just finishing out their townhouse development. The Hillpoint one, I'm less familiar. Twenty years. So call it ten, twenty, and twenty twenty-four.
Okay, so there's still, I mean, if it's very new, the one that you're saying is most comparable to us that has just twenty-two, five, and five for the projection, for the actuals here, that's still very new. So it's hard to even tell because you all have even told us that it's phased in over time.
No, those are all, all three examples we gave you are complete projects.
Right, but they're newer. So it's not, it's not like it's a ten year, except for the one, the Hillpoint Commons one you said is ten years old. Didn't you just say that the Point at Harborview, oh yeah, twenty years, sorry, didn't you just say that the Point at Harborview was new?
It's, it is, the full project has completed all one hundred townhouses at the end of twenty twenty-four, maybe into twenty-five, but yet that is newer.
Okay, and the apartments the same?
The apartments are Obese Place. That's the adjacent project that used to be the Obese Hospital.
Right, sorry, I'm sorry, the three hundred apartments that were with Point, Point at Harborview.
Oh, those have been online for about five years.
Okay, that's helpful. Now, my other question, and then I'll turn it over if I may. Dr. Gordon, I'm wondering if you can tell us, I know that from this projection here, this line graph that showed the stagnancy of the schools enrollment. My curiosity is, because of all the development, everything's been happening in our borough that is specific to these schools that we're talking about, can you give me an idea regarding Hillpoint, Killfor, Kings Fork Middle School and Kings Fork High School? How much, have we been stagnant in those schools the last five, ten years, or can you tell me what kind of growth we've seen in those specific schools?
Yes, ma'am. I think I need to give the board and just the school community just a little bit more of an oversight. Ms. Slinglove, if you'll allow me to dig in a little deeper. As Mr. Hughes had pointed out, or Mr. Wine had pointed out, last year at Hillpoint, we were at seven hundred and seventy-seven kids. This year, we're at seven hundred and ninety-three. We were actually at seven ninety a day ago with three more just enrolled, as I whispered to Ms. Howell. And as we know, there still are some houses that are currently being built, even on your way into Hillpoint, so we're expecting a little bit potentially more of an increase there. I also want to remind the board that Hillpoint Elementary School also has three pre-K classes. So anytime we have those pre-K classes, it's a total of twenty-six V P I students, one early childhood special education for a total of thirty-seven. That now removes three classrooms, and that's under our normal viewpoint of twenty-five to one for our classes. But as we know, in V P I, with our early childhood initiative, we can't go to twenty-five. Some classes have nineteen, some grade levels have twenty-one, some grade levels have twenty-three. Kings Fork Middle School is right around nine hundred and ninety, and Kings Fork High School, my last check was at seventeen sixteen. Now, one of the things that, as Mr. Wine had referred to, the cooperative strategy study that was done during the twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one school year, we knew that the projections that came from cooperative strategies were going to allow the school division to grow about six hundred and forty-two kids. And what you see on the, in the presentation, on the graph, on the chart, those numbers are pretty accurate. However, one thing, one of the things I do want to point out to the board is, the one thing about having someone like Terry Napier, who's been with us for thirty-six years, besides being able to hit from the senior tees of golf, is that he remembers when our mobile units were installed. So when he first began in nineteen eighty-nine, we had mobile units at our schools. And so when we're taking a look at this graph here, even though the school division's overall enrollment may have only grown by one hundred, we were already over- overall enrollment may have only grown by 100, we were already over capacity then, and we are still over capacity now. We currently have 46 current mobile units that are being used. That doesn't include a couple of them that are being used for storage. So, as the plan that we've talked about for, you know, so many years about eliminating our mobile units, we've been over capacity in our schools for a long period of time, which is the reason why we have so many mobile units that are still being used. So, when we're looking at this graph for the last 15 years, while the numbers are pretty close to being accurate, it doesn't change the fact that we had those mobile units for almost 25 years before the start of this graph, and that's some of the concerns that, you know, we're looking at as the conversation, and I think Mr. Riddick was with us and a couple of others when we did the tour of the school, and yeah, I think you were there too, and Sling left, when Dr. Miller was explaining how exactly those classrooms are used, and that's why I'm happy to see that the city has included that functional capacity piece, you know, in the chart, because that was the big discussion that we had at one of our joint meetings, where we were kind of taking a look at functional capacity of a school versus the actual overall capacity. And just as a reminder to the board, that functional capacity can change each year depending on what the students actually needs, specifically when it comes to our increasing population of special education students, and if students have to have one-to-one aides and things of that nature. So, I kind of wanted to give a little bit more of a historical context to answer your question.
Anyone else have, oh, board member Jenkins?
Yes, thank you. I just have a couple of questions, so I can be clear. Are you saying that there would not be an option for us to own our building or the land that it will be on? And it can't be in writing if we can?
The city would own the building.
So, the school will absolutely, okay. And then I have another question. This is about the inside, so I know it's gonna be renovated, but can you give any background on the system, the HAVX system that's in there? Will that be part of the renovation?
Anything that is not functional would be replaced and upgraded.
Okay.
Thank you.
If I could elaborate one more thing, again, we talked about, I touched on state code because the city council is the only body that's able to authorize rezoning. They're the only body that can accept real estate in this manner to, that's proffered as part of the proposal.
Anyone else?
Madam Chair.
Vice Chair McGee.
Good evening, Mr. Hughes. Question for the valuation. What was that, how was that determined, the 6.27? Is that as the building sits right now or with the projected renovations?
I believe the applicant submitted an appraisal, and it took some estimations as it related to the build-out. I'm going off of memory, but I think it had some thought as it related to that.
Now, has the city conducted a valuation as the facility sits right now on what we believe the value is?
We've looked at some comparables in and around the area. A good example would be across the street at the Human Resource Building, the three-story building that sits across, and it's, I believe, again, I'm going off of memory, a little over $4.5 million, somewhere in that ballpark. I think the thing that we've really focused in on is, again, what's in your capital improvement plan to actually build a new construction of an office building at that $22 million idea in '31 to '35, and then the ability to receive a existing facility and the value related to that.
Thank you. Now, prior to the developer proposing this offer, has there been any talks with the city and the state about purchasing the vehicle, or the building, or having it gifted to us? I know, you know, we had a lot with the mayor or the governor with the Port 460 project. It's a building and land owned by the state. Were there any discussions about, hey, we have a need here in Suffolk for our SAO office? Could this be gifted to us?
All of my interactions with VDOT historically have been the opportunity to realize revenue by selling the land and anything that came along with it. When they looked at the site on Main Street, they saw it as a location that no longer serviced their needs. It's been there since, I believe, the 40s, and so they had relocated their office building to a spot in northern Suffolk about eight or so years ago with the plan to also move the operations facility to a better and more strategic location that's currently under construction in North Gate Commerce Park. And so, along with that, they worked in the ability to receive revenue, significant revenue to sell what's on North Main Street. So, they were not interested in deeding it or gifting it. They wanted to receive revenue to build the facilities that are under construction.
But was that, I mean, has there been a conversation regarding the need for public schools here in Suffolk?
With VDOT?
With VDOT or the state, any legislators?
So, we put in our legislative package every year, and we stress to our legislative officials the interest and need to see more state funding for our needs as it relates to the construction or reconstruction of Suffolk schools.
Thank you. Now, how long has that building been for sale?
Well, the property in whole has been for sale six-plus years, maybe more.
And do you have any historical valuations on that building or that property over the six years? Do we know what it was, they were asking for it last year?
What was the last part of your question?
Do we know the price that the state was asking for that land for last year? Or do we have any historical valuations on that 2.9 acres plus the VDOT building?
So, VDOT is not interested in subdividing the property and selling pieces of it? Their interest is selling the entire 80-some acres.
Thank you, sir.
Anyone else that has not yet had the floor to speak? All right, board member Sling Lef? I'm hung up on the proffers, so I have a question. Has there been any discussion of the fact, could the city just pay for the building and buy the building at whatever the cost is and allow the schools to keep their proffers? Since the conveyance of the property is gonna go to the city, is that a possibility that the city can purchase that portion of the property from the developer so that the school can still have the proffers to support the increased growth from the development?
That is not a possibility.
Mr. Riddick?
Thank you so much, Chair Howell. I do apologize for my late arrival, I'm just getting off of work, have an hour commute, but I do have a question. In regards to this facility, considering the age, we had a comparable building that we owned around about the same years. Have you all did any check to see if there was any mold or asbestos towel used in that building, and who's gonna cover the abatement of it?
So, as I mentioned before, the plan would be to renovate the entire facility and modernize it for the school administration.
I'm pulling up the value of that building as we speak. I do apologize because the way our assessor's office do the value, they separate it, land, value, and the value of the building, and I believe my colleague was inquiring about the value of the building. So, I do apologize at the risk of being redundant. The options that we are talking about here at the moment is allowing the city to move forward with receiving the building, and it go through renovations paid by, I'm assuming since our conversation, a third party, and then the city has the option about, meaning we will never own it, correct?
The city of Suffolk would own the building. That is the strategy.
Okay.
And I, just to, you know, the request that we're having in front of you as it relates to the usage of the school administration of the facility in there. The city council understands their role as it relates to rezoning, taking on the potential renovations for that facility for the school administration's use. And so, I'm happy to answer as many questions as you like, but at the end of the day, the council's gonna have to make the call as it relates to this rezoning regardless with the information as it relates to values and the details that come along with it. But the goal is to take the current and previous setup with the school administration in the lease space and the struggle of the size of it, as well as the ongoing issues with the developer, and move the ability to expand their needs, advance it with this proposal sooner rather than '20, '31, '35, if that even occurs, because obviously, what would have to align is a competition that'll exist as it relates to building an office building versus renovating or replacing another school that's on the CIP. But it also has to align with whatever position you're currently in for your lease. We would have to renew the lease past 2028 in your existing facility. There's just not a lot of office buildings that exist in the city of Suffolk if this project, if this doesn't go in this, if this project doesn't move forward.
Okay. So, the market value based off of the city assessment is $13,318,300. And my question is, say, if this board don't make a decision regarding to supporting the recommendations of Riverbend, what impact does that put on this project as it sits? I understand you said the city has to make a decision either way, but what impact, if any, does this put on this project?
Well, I would, I can't speak on behalf of the city council, but essentially, I'm here representing the mayor and city council, asking the school board to weigh in on this rezoning because it impacts you, right? So, you submit in your capital improvement plan, you have one in the existing one that talks about the new construction of an office building in the latter years. Your current CIP that we received a few weeks back talks about funding that would move that up. This is that opportunity to move it up. This is the only opportunity to move it up. So, we would have to make a call to answer your question one way or the other, but it's city council's request to get your direction as it relates to what, would you like to take advantage of this opportunity, or do you not see it as an opportunity?
Madam Chair, I'm gonna wrap up at this point here. My question is, and this may have already been asked already, if we were to weigh in, is there a way we can stagger out the fulfillment of that? And when we say senior properties, far as senior living, are there any codes that prohibits anyone from under 55 or persons coming in with children? Because when we say seniors, senior living, we assume that it's just senior citizens are not gonna generate children. So, I just want to ask for the record, would there, is there any place in code that would 100% prevent if we move forward and the senior development part of that portion goes forward, student generation?
You're, just so I'm clear, your concern is about their proposal to build a portion of it at 55 and up?
Yes.
And you want to ensure that there are no school-aged children in that development?
Correct.
Yeah, so there's a...
Do you want to speak to that?
So, thank you for the question. As it relates to how we regulate age-restricted developments, we ensure that that information is detailed and aligned with HUD standards within the proffer statement provided in support of the development. As it relates to whether or not children could live there, the data that we have citywide demonstrates that it's very, very unlikely. However, doesn't necessarily prohibit someone from using an address that may be available. But aside from the proffer that would limit it to persons of 62, age of 62 or older, the developer would have the ability to put deed restrictions, should they be for sale units associated with the development, or they would be able to enforce that through their management company.
So, basically, what I'm gathering from you to ensure that I'm clear in my understandings, there is no way we can guarantee that even the senior living portion of it will not generate students.
So, essentially, what occurs in these scenarios with age-restricted units is a couple of things occur, and so what we'll see, receive in a proffer is they'll mention that they're age-restricted. What'll occur is they'll reach out to or pull guidance as it relates to HUD. The other things that occur is that the ownership will either put in deed restrictions to it, they'll also put things like condo association documents, and so there's self-policing amongst the other residents. And then final, you know, anyone who's going to buy a condo, these are condos, they're not rentals, you would go out and receive a mortgage on it. Within that mortgage, if you've signed a mortgage, you know there's about an encyclopedia's worth of paper that you sign on. One of those things that are on there is a guarantee related to the age-restricted. I think you can have someone over 18, but nothing under that, and so there's a number of policing powers that occur as it relates to more the private sector that getting connected to it. So, we're giving you a really long-winded answer to tell you that we will see them proffer that, and then essentially, through a number of different mechanisms on the private side and through financing side, that gets policed that way.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I want the board to bear in mind and keep in consideration per HUD guidelines based off my research. In order to qualify for the exemption, the housing community, this is, the question that was asked was, what must a housing community or facility do to qualify for the 55 or older housing for older persons exemptions? In order to qualify for the exemption, the housing community slash facility must satisfy each of the following. At least 80% of the occupied units must be occupied by at least one person 55 years of age or older. The owner or management of the housing facility or community must publish and adhere to the policies and procedures that demonstrate an intent to provide housing for persons 55 or older. The facility, community must comply with the rules issued by the Secretary for Verification of Occupancy through reliable surveys and affidavits. So, there is no guarantee that this will not generate students for our R-ridish grade system. So, I just want the board to be fully aware of that despite the excellent presentation that we have received. If we move forward and go with the option of allowing senior housing to go first, there is nothing guaranteeing us that it will not generate students, because as we know, we have a lot of grandparents who are raising their grandchildren. So, this is the rock and hard place where we're in, and I said this at the last meeting. I feel as if our back is against the wall, as if we say no to this, we are gonna be stuck in a building that is not adequate. In my opinions, the professional building is equivalent to the Freeny Avenue building that we're tearing down at the moment. So, that's what my concern is, board. I have nothing else, Madam Chair. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Riddick. I'll try to be real quick with my questions, and then I have some comments, so you guys are welcome to take a seat. First and foremost, having looked online at what's available, can you confirm that it has, has it already been purchased by Ryan Holmes, or is their purchase contingent on the rezoning request being approved?
I believe they have not acquired the site and that it is contingent upon rezoning.
So, you already, I just want to clarify, you said it is not possible, even if the rezoning request is turned down and Ryan Holmes backs out of purchasing it, VDOT is not going to consider the city just buying the building, even though it's been on the market for six years?
I feel very confident of that.
Okay. I just want to call back to my borough. There was supposed to be a senior living community behind the Food Lion Shopping Center on Lee, Center on Lee Farm Lane. That's what it was advertised as for years. I think a great effort was made to keep it that, and at some point over the past few years, it is not restricted to senior living only. We have probably 25 to 30 kids coming out of that community. So, I would, again, caution the board that there's no promise, even if it's designated it's senior living, it can, it can be flipped at some point, or things can be changed because we have students going to Creekside, which is almost a capacity, coming out of what was once designated as a senior living community. Another thing to note, enrollment is up, as you heard Dr. Gordon say, specifically in the schools that you guys have laid out as impacted. Now, speaking with the mayor in August, as this conversation, that's where the conversation began with me and then filtered to the board, his emphasis was that the impact would be on Elephant's Fork, and the solution is already there, that you guys are working on land acquisition and then subsequently site work. What I see in this presentation has... What I see in this presentation has nothing to do with Elephant's Fork. Am I correct?
Yeah.
That zoned area is specifically only Hill Point?
If I could touch on two things that you'd mentioned. One, I believe the development behind Lee Farm Lane actually seeked a rezoning to remove that proffer, I think originally it was, and so they came back, and so things can change, but they did have to come back to the legislative body.
Correct.
Originally, I think we had in the original presentation at Planning Commission that it mentioned, or maybe in the package, it said Elephant's Fork, and it should have said Hill Point.
Okay.
So that was an error on our side.
Okay, thank you. And to confirm when the community will see resolution number three as an option later, there will be no certificates of occupancy issued before 2028. Is that correct? Can, can you confirm that?
I've seen the resolution about ten minutes ago. So let me state what, what the resolution and our receipt of that looks like. So the, anything that's just not short and sweet, like resolution one, short and sweet, resolution two, that has some phasing in there, unless the applicant is providing those phasings, and then subsequently, it's my understanding that the resolution three does do that, but we would look to see them also update their proffers to align with what's in the resolution.
Understood. Thank you for that. I think my rest, the rest of my questions will have to be presented to city council before their November nineteenth meeting, because I don't hold you responsible for knowing the answers to the what I have next, and I understand that city council can't speak here tonight. I just want to make some observations to the community that's here and that's watching, especially to our staff. If this doesn't go through, it's in no way a reflection of where you are valued and our priorities. I think it's on record, on paper, online, that we've been asking for help for several years with schools that are just damaged, not up to quality, maybe not even up to code, and a building for you. So if the vote doesn't go in the direction of supporting this, in no way is that dismissing what we observe as the need for our staff as well. I think the frustration, and I've had conversations with my city council counterpart, several board members sitting up here, one, I, let me say this, I appreciate that we're being included in the conversation finally. However, I see some frustration with the timeline and unfolding of things. There was, as several of you have read, an article in the paper that quoted the Planning Commission Director Johnny Edwards criticizing us for not being present at that meeting and not giving input. That's never been part of our process. We welcome to be invited and dialogue with city council. They don't attend our committee meetings and dialogue with them, they dialogue with us. That was the expectation. So that was misleading. I would like to encourage that we continue to be part of the process, but in a proper manner, dialoguing with city council, once the Planning Commission has made their logistical recommendation and done their job. I feel, I told Board Member Jenkins, Vice Chair McGee, Board Member Slingoff, and Councilwoman Wright, like Mr. Riddick said, I feel a little bit backed in a corner here, because we do have this limited opportunity. However, it's very apparent, and not even like hidden this time, the burden this will place on schools that are not on our CIP before 2035, and there's no solution to that offered other than a hopeful delay on certificates of occupancy being issued, which doesn't even address the burden. So I, I just want to put it out there. You know, there's, I appreciate being included. My personal opinion is, the Planning Commission should have made their recommendation and taken a logistical look at it, shared it with the city, and the city should have had either an education committee meeting with us, or a joint city council meeting, as such that didn't happen, and here we are. The eyes are on us as if we shelter, we shoulder the burden of this. We've presented our, our priorities through the CIP to the city. They are not and should not be contingent upon housing development approval. This is an optical illusion that we have a choice here. The choice is, you know, bad A or bad B. And the facts are, we need a new Elephant's Fork, need, and it's prioritized. We need a new Nansman River addition, it's prioritized. We need a new SAO. All of those were prioritized on our CIP. So my question, I guess to the city, welcome you to come alongside of us. The beginning of that would be to reject the rezoning and show us where we rank amongst your priorities. I have no further questions.
Madam Chair, may I?
Yes.
Mr. Hughes, I had a couple of follow-ups for you, sir. I know it was asked, or it was stated, the city would own the building. Do you have a timeframe of that? Would that ever be handed back over to SPS for ownership?
Uh, I'd have to work with the city attorney to understand that, and then obviously, city council would be involved.
Okay. Second question, has the city conducted a study of how much revenue the developer would profit from this project?
Uh, what, I'm not sure I follow.
If this project were to be approved, developer has hit their way. Has there been a study to know how much revenue that company would make off this project?
Off the, their housing development?
Off the, everything. Yes, sir. Housing development, the school, all of it.
Uh, we don't look at what the revenue that a development would make. We do not do that.
So what's hard for me, Madam Chair, you know, is, we have a great city. People are loving to move here, things are building, we're bustling. I love it. We need to grow. But what's hard is, we have a need too, on this school board. And Mr. Hughes, I think you made a comment, and maybe I'm interpreting wrong, but I want you to clarify, you said, if we don't take this offer, the SAO building will not move up on our CIP. Is that correct?
Correct. And if I can elaborate?
That's concerning to me.
Yeah, let me elaborate, so...
It kind of comes off as a threat. That's how I interpreted it.
No, let me elaborate if I can.
If you don't take this deal, screw, screw what you need. I mean, that's how I feel right now.
Yeah, if you'd like me to elaborate, I can.
Go ahead, sir.
So you currently are in a lease situation?
Right.
That lease expires at 2028. In order for us to build a brand-new office building, you've got to calculate within that. And so again, we would need to prioritize twenty-two million dollars approximately for a brand-new construction building in order to move in at the end of 2028. If we miss that window, which we could not hit, to move into a brand-new office building by 2028, we will be forced to renew that lease or come up with some other solution that I'm not aware of in order to house the school board, and more than likely, that's another five-year lease. The, most folks are not interested in a two-to-three-year term, and so I didn't mean to come across threatening, but just from a factual location, you know, we've renewed that lease four or five times, and they're always in five-year increments. They own the building, we don't. There's not a plethora of office space option in the city of Suffolk to move the school board into, and so we would be looking at that scenario. We'll look to see if something else pops up in the meantime, but essentially, there's a reality of that.
I appreciate that, sir. Madam Chair, it's hard, because, you know, we have a need, like you said. I've been on the board only since January, but when I first met with the superintendent at his office, you know, he, he showed me the problems that they're having there. And what disappoints me, I feel like this now, like my chair, you know, what Chair Howe said, we're placed between a rock and a hard spot. If we take this deal, now we're accepting any overcrowding issues. We can't come, I feel like we can't come back to the city and complain about overcrowding because we're seeing this right now. And we're going to be told, hey, you knew what you were getting into. If we don't take this deal, now the city's going to say, well, you must not need that SAO building as bad as you thought you wanted it.
I'm not sure I would interpret it that, I mean, I think this fell and was presented. It wasn't sought out to present and bring to you. Obviously, city council's going to have to make a difficult decision, as well as the Planning Commission, and obviously, we're in front of you to ask you to make a tough decision. And so I think we all recognize that, but there was not a creation of this to bring to you. It obviously came via the application.
Now, when did the city first get notified of this proposal?
Oh, gosh. Probably earlier this year, we received indication, well, yeah, probably earlier this year, we received indication that there, there was a group that was working on a negotiation with VDOT and working through what a rezoning application would look like.
So we're in October. When you say earlier, can we kind of narrow it down? Was it January, February, March? I mean, I'm not asking for exact dates, but can we, you know, we're, we're late, late into the year right now, so that's pretty broad earlier this year.
Yeah, and maybe I'd need to provide a little bit of color, if I think I know where your question's going. Ultimately, on a rezoning case, one that's complex, this is a complex, obviously, one. There are a couple of things that occur with this, and this is just, you know, factuality as it relates to real estate, rezonings, things of that nature. So applicant will come in, maybe have a concept, an idea, they'll review what we have in the UDO, look at what the comprehensive plan looks like, things of that nature, and begin to work through what is a potential application for rezoning. And so oftentimes, there can be a back and forth as it relates to ensuring that the zoning classification that's being sought does in fact work, does align with the UDO. You know, it's our position or our responsibility to make sure that any application comes in is complete and thorough. And so there's something in our UDO that calls for adequate public facilities, and so if you were to rezone a piece of property, or get a conditional use permit, things of that nature, change the use of the property, you have to complete an adequate public facilities report. And so that includes things like geotech, it includes traffic studies, water, sewer, fiscal impact, it's fairly extensive. And then obviously, within that is a rezoning. At the same token, you are working on your land negotiation and ensuring that those things can align up. And so a long way to, to answer that, oftentimes, when we see the initial application, it's still a little raw and doesn't have the nuts and bolts around it. A good example would be what our traffic engineer is going to coordinate and interact with their traffic engineer to ensure intersections are reviewed, how far do we want to look at impact, so pushing out to the bypass, pushing out to 460. So there can be a lot of back and forth very early on in a rezoning process, and so it also bought me a little bit of time to attempt to run through my, my head as well. And so I would say quarter one, early quarter two of this year.
Okay. Madam Chair, when were you notified?
August.
August. All right. I appreciate it, Mr. Hughes. Thank you.
We, we did tour the, the space with the superintendent, I believe, in April or May?
All right, thank you, sir. Appreciate that.
Any further questions? Seems like not.
Yes, Madam Chair, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Hughes, for the explanation and answering the questions. I think it's pretty clear about the concerns, and Mr. Hughes is right, when the team toured the building, we took the chiefs over there with taking a overlook at the VDOT building, and I think that was surely after they had the issue with the leak. And so that's something that, you know, we continue to have conversations about. Part of the reason why we had talked about trying to have a joint meeting so we can kind of get some of these things answered. I know that, you know, however the board decides to vote, I will continue to have some communication on this project with Mr. Hughes, because we understand, not only the opportunity that's been presented to us, but as I think the board has made clear, the timeline of it all, just to recollect or review what I had talked about in September, generally, nine months for design work, because of the work that probably needs to be done on that building. I would estimate twenty to twenty-four months for renovation. So we're looking at thirty-three, thirty-three months away, which kind of brings us pretty close to when that lease expires. So, you know, either way, even if a decision is made yea or nay tonight, something is still going to have to happen if there's going to be any movement, as Ms. Howe was talking about, out of the current professional building. Mr. Hughes is correct, where five-year leases, the city has tried to do one-year leases in the past, the owners, the two owners did not want to do that, and we also did take a look at trying to do some repairs. I think that was during the time that Mr. Riddick was the chair of the school board, and the repairs to the professional building actually outweighed the cost of the building. So we weren't going to be interested in doing that either. So we know that with the three projects that the school board has voted on, Elephant's Fork, you know, we definitely need, we need that land acquisition yesterday, and I think everyone is aware of that, and I know Mr. Hughes and his team have been trying to narrow some things down, good conversation that I had with Mayor Duman about it as well. But the expansion of Nansman River, new houses are coming up over there too, and this SAO project. We just, I really felt bad for Mr. Waller and his half of the seventh floor earlier this summer, when it was eighty-six degrees for three weeks. And so those are the types of things that we just don't want to go through, and we understand with Mr. Moore and Mr. Hughes, he was there, Jerry was there, they toured our professional building and saw the total number of staff that were sharing office space. I think that was a, a good eye-opening experience, which we think kind of helped to expedite those things. Them touring the office space, them touring Freney Avenue, as Mr. Riddick had mentioned, and then us taking a tour of the VDOT building. Those three things occurred pretty quickly, but now we understand the VDOT building is, of course, is a part of a larger project. So either way that the board votes today, I will definitely have to give a call to Mr. Hughes tomorrow, so we can figure out the next steps and then see what needs to be done.
Thank you, Dr. Gordon. At this time, our work session will go into recess for our dinner break. We will reconvene in our public meeting at seven PM. We will reconvene in our public meeting at 7:00 P. M.
Good evening. The Public Meeting of Suffolk City School Board for October 9th is reopened and called to order at this time. We will now stand for the Pledge of Allegiance led by Board Member Valerie Fields.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and for all.
Thank you. Next, we will recognize a moment of silence. Board Member Sling Laff will read the mission of Suffolk Public Schools.
The mission of Suffolk Public Schools is to produce 21st century learners that will become productive citizens in society, foster a dynamic, safe, and nurturing learning environment, partner with school community for the benefit of students and staff, strengthen the school division by employing a highly qualified and diverse staff, effectively and efficiently manage capital and human resources, and effectively communicate to increase community investment.
Thank you. Dr. Gordon, could you introduce our musical selection?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. We have Ms. Sarah Haig representing Colonel Fred Cherry. We have the middle school choir here. Ms. Haig is in her eighth year teaching music. Currently, her third year here at SPS. She was in another school division in the region, but we're not going to mention that. Her current position is the Chorus Director at Colonel Fred Cherry Middle School. She's a 2016 graduate from James Madison University with a Bachelor Arts in Music Education. She is also a professional vocalist and a core member of the Virginia Symphony Chorus. Tonight, our Colonel Fred Cherry Middle School Chorus is going to be performing two selections: "I Dare You," arranged by Andy Beck, and "Gallup," written by Ken Byrd. Ms. Haig, we're going to turn it over to you and all of these outstanding honks. It's okay.
Thank you very much. I'm going to give my colleagues an opportunity to briefly thank you themselves and offer kudos to your kiddos. Board Member Fields.
Boys and girls, just excuse me. I would like to just thank you for that, for those two renderings. You all have some talents on that team, in your chorus, that you want to keep developing it. Thank you, Mrs. Hughes-Haig, Mrs. Haig, for all that you're doing with them. You're helping them to bring out those hidden talents that they have. It shows. It really does show. Thank you. Yes.
Thank you. I just wanted to say that I am so, so, so fiffy, so, so, so excited to hear. They did a wonderful job, and I dare anyone not to love what they heard tonight. Just keep on, you know I love you. Thank you for all that you do and all that you pour into our students. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Vice Chair McGee.
Hey, great job. In the words of this young generation, they ate. So, great job. How long did it take for them to master that?
Well, we started "Gallup" specifically as a solfège song. So, if you know "doh," a deer, a female deer. Solfège is our singing language, so we started working on "Gallup" right around the first week of school. So, what are we about, six, seven weeks in now? Six, seven? Funny, okay, sorry.
Well, they sounded amazing, so thank you for all you do. Please tell the kids, great job. And thanks to the parents.
Board Member Brittingham.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Ms. Haig, that was just amazing. Sound of Music is one of my all-time favorite movies to watch, and I love that rendition of The Sound of Music. Such talent, such talent in such a young age, and you're doing a great job developing their talent. So, tell them we said thank you for blessing us tonight.
I am super excited. Y'all did a outstanding job. "Dare to Love," oh my God, as you all were singing it, so many different, you know, thoughts and things were coming to my mind. I just want to say thank you because as a music teacher, you are making a monumental difference in the lives of our students. As you were directing, I was recalling Ms. Gail Hinton Copeland, my first middle school music teacher. Ms. Kathleen Haberman, my seventh grade middle school, I mean, my eighth grade middle school teacher, Ms. Joanne Qualls, my seventh grade middle school teacher. Because music, I said this at my town hall, school may not be for everyone, but we have to have something in it for everyone. And I believe our students really enjoy participating, and I saw how your interaction with them, how you had them cracking up and they were still sounding so excellent. You're doing a great job. And I want to claim this now, board members. 757 Clash of the Choirs, I know she's in your burrow, but we're going to be poaching, okay? Thank you so much.
Thank you so much for bringing the kids here tonight. The music selection was just what we needed to hear. Their voices were angelic. I mean, they were perfect, and you're doing a wonderful job with them. So, thank you so much for coming tonight, and please encourage the kids to keep those gifts because those are gifts that nobody can take away from them. They can take anywhere they go, and it can change an atmosphere and change a room in a moment. So, I'm grateful that they shared it with us tonight. Thank you.
Thank you again. Perfect selections, and thank you for being part of the SPS team. You have blessed us. Have a good night.
Thank you. (Applause)
At this time, we need to take action on the closed meeting we had earlier this evening. We had a student record review before us, so I will entertain a motion if there is one.
Madam Chair.
Yes, ma'am.
I move that we uphold the recommendation from the closed session for the student discipline.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, the motion was made by Board Member Brittingham to uphold the recommendation, and it was seconded by Vice Chair McGee. Is there any discussion? There being none, we are ready to vote.
Board members, please vote. Board Member Dr. Brittingham?
Yes.
Board Member Fields?
Yes.
Board Member Jenkins?
Yes.
Board Member Riddick?
Yes.
Board Member Sling Laff?
Yes.
Vice Chair McGee?
Yes.
Board Chair Howell?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Thank you. We have moved to the point where we need approval of the agenda for this evening. Is there a motion?
Second.
Okay, it's been moved to approve the agenda by Board Member Jenkins.
Second.
Okay, hold please. I had a second by Vice Chair McGee. I just wanted to, before we move forward on that, call the attention that we were supplied with a second, or I'm sorry, a third resolution regarding the support of the Riverbend Project. So, if you guys wanted to be able to include that in the discussion and action later, that would need to be, that recommendation would need to be added in the approval of the agenda at this point. So, Board Member Jenkins, do you want to amend your motion?
So, you want me to amend it to add it to?
That is completely up to you. If it's going to be even a discussion point later, we have to add that document now.
Okay, so, I move that we add it so we can discuss it.
Okay, so, the motion was made to approve the agenda with the addition of Resolution 3 regarding the Riverbend Project, and it was seconded by Vice Chair McGee and Board Member Brittingham. Is there any discussion? There being none, we are ready to vote.
Board members, please vote. Board Member Dr. Brittingham?
Yes.
Board Member Fields?
Yes.
Board Member Jenkins?
Yes.
Board Member Riddick?
Yes.
Board Member Sling Laff?
Yes.
Vice Chair McGee?
No.
Board Chair Howell?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Thank you. I will yield the floor to Ms. Gardner now to review the protocol for our public speakers. It is the intent of the school board to ensure that the affairs of the board be conducted in an open and orderly manner, that all persons desiring to address the board are afforded an opportunity to do so in the order in which they sign up to speak, that persons in attendance may observe and hear the proceedings of the board without distraction, and that the members of the board and board employees are able to transact the business of the board with minimal disruption. Any persons addressing the board shall, one, confine their comments to matters germane to services, policies, and affairs of the school board of Suffolk Public Schools; two, refrain from words or statements which from their usual construction and common acceptance are construed as insults and tend to incite violence or breach of the peace; three, refrain from obscenity, vulgarity, or other breach of respect; four, comply with the time limit for public comment as set by the board, which can be up to five minutes unless the board through the exercise of its discretion decides to allow less than five minutes for public comment; five, refrain from cumulative or repetitive remarks; and six, refrain from any comments regarding any pending student discipline or employee grievance matters. The appropriate form for such matters is the applicable administrative hearing provided by state law or where appropriate court proceeding. Persons must not engage in disorderly, disruptive, or boisterous conduct such as but not limited to making noise, use of profane language, or obscene gestures, yelling, or similar demonstrations that interrupts or disturbs the peace and good order of the meeting. Persons addressing the board may deliver to the board or its clerk written materials including reports, statements, exhibits, letters, or signed petitions, and may also make use of any chart or graph during their verbal presentation. The school board welcomes comments from the public as appropriate. Board members will listen to public comment but will not comment, deliberate, or take action on them. The school board chair may direct the superintendent to investigate items and report back to the school board at a subsequent meeting. The chair or other presiding officer shall preserve decorum and shall decide all matters of public order subject to appeal to the board. At the request of the chair, a city police officer shall act as sergeant-at-arms at tonight's board meeting. That officer shall, under the direction of the chair or other presiding officer, have charge of the meeting area, the waiting areas and corridors adjacent thereto, and shall prevent disorder or interruption of the business of the board. Our first speaker is Ms. Ann Harris regarding the VDOT Admin Building.
Chair Howell, school board members, and Dr. Gordon, my name is Ann Harris. I live at 2455 Lake Cahoon Road in Suffolk. Yeah, I did want to address the VDOT Admin Building offer that you've been presented. I don't I don't know if I can put documents in the basket, reference to some of the things I'm going to address. I watched last month's work session and I've been looking through the rezoning packet. I'm not really here to talk about whether I'm for or against the rezoning or the project in general, but I have some observations and some information I've gotten from my research. Today, the value of the building came up as a question and I provided in the packet, there are some pages from the appraiser's report, which is included in the rezoning packet and it does state that the $6.2 million building value is a future value based on some hypothetical conditions. One of them is, it's a post-renovation value. And it's also based on the precedent that it will be leased back for 10 years. It specifically says 10-year term with rent paid at $500,000 annually on a triple net lease with 3% annual escalation. So, I don't know. That's up to y'all. I just feel like the information wasn't totally clear and part of my issues, why I'm here tonight, is how some of the information's been presented and how this process has happened. So, it just seems to me that you're not going to have control of your own building for at least another 10 years, which is something that you're already dealing with, with the current location. My other issue is something I haven't really brought up. The new slide presentation tonight kind of threw a lot of new information out there and from my perspective, it kind of looks like it brings up a brand-new set of concerns. I think they'll actually, by presenting those slides with the student generation information, is going to have a negative impact on school proffers in the long term and setting a bad precedent and kind of putting y'all in an awkward position. Slide number eight that you saw in that presentation tonight, I think, is especially the concerning one. It showed, it was the one that showed the breakdown of actual student numbers from the three current existing developments. I kind of feel like this is a little bit awkward sales pitch for the city to actually advertise these low student numbers. It's just cherry-picked information. And they're kind of now opening the door for all developers in the future to cherry-pick data, present their own comps that suit their needs, and argue for lower to no school proffers. So, in the effort to minimize your concerns about Hillpoint and Kingsfork's school capacities, they're basically saying it's okay to ignore the portion of the UDO that helps generate funds for the schools. So, they're kind of presenting this deal as a cost saver, but how many more proffers will be lost in the future as a result of accepting this deal now when you're already losing out on millions of actual cash proffers with this offer? There's an example in that packet. As part of the rezoning packet in the fiscal impact study, the developer consultant references city council retreat slides from 2023. And I remember I was at that retreat. It talks about not counting non-committed pipeline development, which you already saw on the slides. Say they're only counting the committed development towards future generation. So, we already see the developer using these slides from 2023 as a reference to downplay or discount certain future development. And they're actually saying that these slides are being used as advice. So, we know they're paying close attention and will use advice from city's informational slides in the future, which is what I'm worried about tonight with those slides that were presented. So, I just feel, talking about process, if there's genuine concern about the UDO student generation rate that we base the proffers on now, there should be an open and honest discussion about conducting a new student yield analysis, not just going off presentations of cherry-picked data at the 11th hour before rezoning hearings. It seems that de facto policy is being made via slide presentations instead of following an actual process. Y'all, the elected officials, you probably know better than me, but this seems procedurally inaccurate, to say the least. So, I will leave it at that. I had a couple other questions, but with the new information and the new resolution coming out, just kind of, I think, we're ending up with more questions than answers at this point. So, that's my main point. I'll have actually the recommendation I was going to make, so, just for your information. Thank you.
Our next speaker, Jennifer Willman, regarding Riverbend Proposal.
Good evening. I'm pleased to be in front of you again tonight. I don't know about you, but it's been a long week for me, so I'm really hoping you're going to humor me. I would like to draw your attention to my hand. Do you see what I hold here? It's beautiful, isn't it? Look at this fabric. Look at the colors, the pattern, the texture. It's gorgeous, right? You guys look lovely tonight, but I think I could make you some really nice clothes out of this fabric I have here. Don't you see it? You look a little confused. Oh, there's nothing there. That's right. I don't see it either. And even though there's nothing for you to see in my hand, I hope that my words have painted a picture that sounds maybe vaguely familiar to you. Something you might recall from your childhood. The Emperor's New Clothes is not just a well-known children's story. It's a cautionary tale. Hans Christian Andersen wrote about leadership that was swayed by illusion rather than actual substance. Individuals who peddled a beautifully crafted lie. And a chorus of others who, for a variety of reasons, went along with the charade. Now, ultimately, this farce was revealed for what it truly was, a costly deception. I find it most fitting that in the story, the voice that brought truth to the situation, that shattered the illusion, was the voice of a child. So, I'm excited to be in front of the school board because our mission is to help the children first. As you consider the Riverbend Project, I really hope you can draw some parallels between the story and this proposal. Supporting this project is really no different than parading down Main Street with not a stitch of clothing on and thinking that you're in the finest silks. And even before this project, with the traffic the way it is, I definitely don't recommend that. This proposal, if you truly review it in any version or option that's being presented, is truly concerning. SPS already faces huge issues with overcrowding, serious safety concerns, and transportation issues. SPS, the children, the staff, and everyone that makes it up deserves better than the short end of the stick of a development deal. Just like the story, I hope you will listen to the voice of truth and send a strong message that you don't support any option for this project. Let's not buy into the illusion. Make it clear to city council that unless it's for the school library, the make-believe they're selling, we're not buying. Good evening.
Our final speaker, Kelly Hengler, regarding school administration office and student generation rate. Kelly Hengler? She seems to not be present at this time. Do we have any other speakers? Thank you so much. That concludes the portion of the agenda for public speakers on agenda topics. We now move down to the consent agenda. Do I have a motion regarding the consent agenda?
Madam Chair, I move to adopt the consent agenda.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, the motion was made by Vice Chair McGee to approve the consent agenda. It was seconded by Board Member Brittingham. Do we have any discussion? There being none, it looks like we are ready to vote. Board members, please vote. Board Member Dr. Brittingham?
Yes.
I'm sorry?
Yes.
Board Member Fields?
Yes.
Board Member Jenkins?
Yes.
Board Member Riddick?
Yes.
Board Member Slinglove?
No.
Vice Chair McGee?
Yes.
Board Chair Howell?
Yes.
Motion passed. Thank you, ma'am. If you look at the agenda, we have no unfinished business this evening, so we will move down to new business. The first item being Power School Talented Suite. And I will yield the floor to Dr. Gordon at this time for an explanation.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This is the Power School Talent Ed Suite. It's all good. This is one of the goals that we've had. We've actually been using the Frontline and Appletrack system in Suffolk Public Schools for a very long time. And we have tried to have custom builds to be able to make the entire process for our Human Resources Department a lot more efficient. One of the biggest challenges that we've also discovered is our current system does not work well with Alio Link, which is the system that is used in our Budget Finance Department. So, Power School is one of the largest cloud-based software companies in K-12 education. It is definitely the majority, one that is actually used in the Commonwealth of Virginia. Some of the key components that we're really interested in in the Talent Ed Suite are applicant tracking and school spring job board, employee records being easier to access, also including employees having the ability for real-time tracking and updates instead of sometimes having to contact the Human Resources Department. This will also allow us to have contract consolidation. I know one of the big things that was a big seller for Ms. Forsman and Dr. Brown were the cost savings, renewal savings of $44,000 plus an annual uplift of 7% to 5%, resulting in at least $3,500 a year in the very near future. We also will be able to see real-time dashboards. Will make things a lot easier for some of the reports that we're able to provide to the school board and to staff. This transition, the recommendation that's coming from me and coming from staff, to transition from Frontline to Power School will implement implementation costs of $115,959. We have a short timeline for this because of some of the things that we would like to do in Phase 1, which is with school board approval, will begin October 15th and allow us to have the remainder of this calendar year for implementation once we return from winter break.
Thank you, Dr. Gordon. Are there any questions before I ask for a motion? Board Member Brittingham?
Yes, ma'am. Thank you. I do have a couple questions. We are currently using Frontline and we are going to transition. Will these contracts overlap at all?
The contracts will overlap for a few months. That's part of the reason why we're trying to have that deal done, so we do not have to renew Frontline for next fiscal year.
Okay. And then, the other question I wanted to talk about was the, I guess, the student generation amounts that are being used. Looking at our actual student amounts of 14,568, we actually are contracting for 15,200, that's 600-plus. Can you tell me a little bit about why we're contracting up on that, just so that we have a better idea?
Great question, Dr. Brittingham. That's really to allow us to have growth so that our numbers don't have to change over the time of the actual contract and based on our discussions today, I think we all can see that there's growth that's going to be there, so we wanted to build that in.
And one more question for you, Dr. Gordon. Do you have any concerns about the data breach that happened with Power Schools last year and that that's something that we will have to be cognizant of, careful of, because it was a pretty massive data breach? Can you speak to that for us?
Can I pause for a second? I don't believe Ms. Gardner can hear you, so can you speak your...
We can't hear you at all.
Okay, speak just the last question for now, louder into the mic. Is that okay?
Yeah.
Okay.
So, last year, there was a data breach that happened with Power School and I was just asking, Dr. Gordon, what are we putting in place to safeguard us from that? What kind of conversations have you had with Power School to ensure that we don't wind up having that kind of breach?
Yes, ma'am. And Dr. Brittingham's correct where that breach was nationwide, since it probably is the largest K-12 company. But that data breach was actually more on the student information side system than the applicant tracking, human resources piece. And because of that data breach, Mr. Littlefield has been in constant contact with them to really explore some of those new safeguards and I think Power School was really concerned about losing their current customers and ensuring that they can have new ones like us.
Because I know that part of that was that there was ransomware that was attached to that and that a lot of the school districts were having to grapple with that as well. Thank you, Dr. Gordon.
Ms. Gardner, I can remember the second question she asked. She asked why the amount of student population was greater than what we actually have and his answer was to prepare for growth. I don't remember the first question, so if you need that for your minutes. Got it? Okay, thank you. Okay, any further discussion about Power School? Okay, there being none, is there a motion pertaining to this action item?
So moved.
Okay.
Second.
The motion was made to approve the transition to Power School Talented Suite by Mr. Riddick and seconded by Vice Chair McGee. Is there any additional discussion? There being none, we're ready to vote. Board members, please vote. Board Member Dr. Brittingham?
Yes.
Board Member Fields?
Yes.
Board Member Jenkins?
Yes.
Board Member Riddick?
Yes.
Board Member Slinglove?
Yes.
Vice Chair McGee?
Yes.
Board Chair Howell?
Yes.
Motion passed. Thank you, ma'am. Next up on our agenda is the action item regarding the school administration office and student generation rate. Basically, to review, the city has asked us if we support this project and the subsequent SAO building that could come from it. They would like us to formally support it in some manner, so that would be the vote that we're taking now. We have, as a reminder, Resolution 2, 1, 2, and 3. We have heard from the attorney for the developer that Resolution 2 is not functional. I will tell you that it appears the developer is in the room, so if anyone has any questions for that person, I think now would be the time to bring those to attention before we take action or put a motion on the floor. Is anyone interested in hearing from the developer?
Madam Chair, I would like to hear from him.
Okay.
Adam, would you mind coming on up and having the ability to answer some of these questions? Man, I want to make sure I don't, how to, pronounce your last name for me again.
Ed Bauer, Adam Ed Bauer.
Yeah, Mr. Ed Bauer. Thank you so much. Mr. Ed Bauer is representing Ryan Holmes, as Ms. Howell had referred to earlier during the work session, so he had informed me that he was going to be here tonight and I let Ms. Howell know that the developer was in the room, just in case there was questions at the board, could I ask him directly? So, hopefully you'll be able to talk freely and to be able to clarify any hanging questions that the school board has. So, Ms. Howell, I'll turn it back over to you, or Mr. McGee, I'm sorry.
Thanks, Madam Chair. Sir, good evening. Thanks for being here. I'm going to see if you can answer a question that I asked the city manager earlier. What's the projected gross profit off of this project for your company?
It's a great question. I don't have the exact answer because there's not, we have performers out there, obviously, in modeling, but we're very early in the process and we don't know if this rezoning is going to take place. So, there's different modeling of that, whether there's a cash proffer, there's different things on that, whether we have to go by right usage, which is a completely different model and generation of profits. I don't have those exact numbers. I apologize there.
I appreciate it. Do you live in Suffolk or have kids in Suffolk Public Schools?
No, I do not. I live in Chesapeake. I've been in Hampton Roads area for about 25 years, son of, blessed to be a son of a educator, 40 years. My mother retired two years ago and my sister also followed in her footsteps as an educator. So, I was actually, my role as far as land acquisition, helping with entitlement and bringing the process through on developments has gave me some privilege and some insight to be able to try to help out with a lot of the concerns you guys mentioned. I was here and listened to both your meetings and been in conversations and just wanted to thank you guys for being as dedicated to what you guys doing, you know, and protecting the kids and putting them first. And there is, you know, I know someone said that there's a, you know, the silk that's not there. And I wanted to clarify something too on the proffers. The cash proffer's been talked about a lot of, hey, that's the system that's kind of, the UDO and Suffolk has put in place is for assistance to help schools with capacity. The clarification, I think, that's important to understand is those cash proffers are paid as a per-unit basis at the closing of each unit, which means the homeowner's moving into that house when you get that one three-hundredth of the proffer at that moment. So, that presents some complications to problems that you guys are occurring to, right? So, when we were starting to develop the idea and the concept, we were heavily looking at, what does the city want? What's the comprehensive plan? What are the needs? How do we address that? And then, through conversations, found out that there was this need for the administration building and I was personally excited, which, because of my history, that we were able to potentially make a huge win for everybody and that's why I'm sad to see that you guys feel like you're in a rock and a hard place. There's definitely never the intention. It was actually trying to say, hey, you have a cash proffer that's going to trickle into you guys over 78 years of the project to address a problem that you guys need solutions to earlier than that, right? And we all know value of money over time diminishes as well, so I thought we're kind of coming up with it and, of course, I'm going to be biased, somewhat of my idea, but the school administration building difference versus the cash proffers was in trying to solve a problem, a need, free up funds in the budget now instead of down the line, give you guys allocation to do other big things that you guys need to do and do multiple priorities at the same time. It wasn't, like, if I knew it was going to be as big of an item and we could have done the cash, the cash proffers as normal, I maybe was naive in thinking this was a really cool alternative solution to solve real problems and try to... solution to solve real problems and try to be ahead of the game on it. And that's kind of where it came up with there, so I just wanted to clarify that. I don't know if that helps anything.
No, I appreciate it. I have five kids in public schools, nieces, nephews. A lot of us up here have kids, grandkids, that have gone through Suffolk Public Schools. I love the growth in this city. We need it. I'm thankful for developers like you coming, you know, to our city to develop. But one thing I want to share, you know, having you in front of us, that I see a lot and when I talk to people regarding this, we need help. Our schools need help. We have dire needs, infrastructure issues, and we don't think that's being taken seriously. So, you know, you're a developer. I want you to hear from us. We have issues in this city with our schools. You know, developers are here, you're going to make money, that's great. You know, that's a great thing about America. But we need help in our city. And until certain things can be addressed and fixed, this right here doesn't look like a great deal for us. You know, Elvis Fork, right? Hill Point, Kings Fork Middle. There's so many fires we have right now. So I want you to hear that from us. We don't get this opportunity to speak to a developer. I thank Mayor Doeman for all he did to have you here. It's great. But I just want you to know from this board, you know, for any future projects or... We need help, and we would love to hear... And I don't know if I'm stepping out of line, Attorney Waller, but I would love to have you communicate with us more, you know?
Yeah, to address that, 100%, I want you to know that across from you right now, you have a developer and an advocate that's trying to come up with creative solutions to do what you said. There's only so much we can do, and I know you brought up the profit earlier, and I'm just a guy that works for a company, right? So I don't make any of that. You know, but it's... There's, I think there's also a concept of 100%, we want to find creative solutions, but we have, it's still a business, and businesses have to make certain numbers in order for them to even do the profit or to do the project and to be bankrolled and financed, and there's all these different situations. A lot of these costs, like cash proffers, get passed on to the homeowners, right? That's just like tariffs or different things like that. They get passed down. So if we can limit that, too, that also is helpful for affordability and other problems. Like, there's so many things we're trying to balance when you put a development into place, and especially specifically this location and being a redevelopment. You know, we strived in our proposal to VDOT, because VDOT's done multiple requests for proposals and had a couple of things start the process and get kind of turned down. Ours was the winning bid with VDOT most recently because we took in the comprehensive plan, took in a lot of different things that the city was asking for and listened and tried to accommodate, and we were being creative and willing to work with putting different things into that proposal, one of which ended up being the school board. Unfortunately, you know, I think it's not understood, too, is there is a buy-right usage. I don't know if Kevin Hughes talked to you guys at all about the underlying zoning that's already there, which is B2, which if we can't get rezoned, unfortunately, that kind of puts us in a rock and a hard spot of we have to figure out a density and design that makes the acquisition costs palatable, right? And if not us, it's the next buyer. So if there's a signal that this is not going to happen, which is your right to say, so, you know, a community similar to Bridgepoint is just buy right, so no proffers, no additional, any kind of additional infrastructure needs can be addressed, and they can build, we can build a design similar to Bridgepoint, which would be right around 650 to 675 units on that with a mixed use in retail, which has some traffic, which would add to traffic, would add similar to more students than what we're... Should be way more than what we're projecting with the way we're designing it, but that is a possibility, too. So I do want to make sure you guys understand that, again, we're not trying to put a... At least my intention was, I don't know who's, I can't speak for anyone's heart, but I was not trying to put anyone in a rock and a hard spot of this or that. It's more of, I thought it was a win-win-win all around where you're able to get a building that you guys seemingly desperately need. I was talking to Dr. Gordon and some of the issues you guys have, it's, I don't like that, especially being a son of a teacher, that people have to deal with that, those conditions at a workplace or anybody. Allocate funds, give you some priorities, everything, you know, it's a lot of the benefits, and then put in a rezoning that's restrictive, that can help you maintain with a proffered approach on how many COs come in, when restricting, age restricting as much as we could on those units to limit now down to 497 units and only 329 with student generating people, right, our households. And we can, I heard earlier about the concern about the 55 and up, too. We have no problem proffering that it has to be in the deed restrictions and the covenants and the condos. I mean, we can force that as much as possible, but in our history, when we have 55 up communities, the way we design the community, the amenities, the features, everything, it's really not, we don't have buyers that are, that have school-aged children anyways, and it would be mortgage rug if they did it and a lot of things. So I'm rambling, but that was kind of the intent and what we thought is that we didn't want to do that because the proposal that was there earlier that we ended up getting the bid from was about a 700-unit design. It never got to you guys or even past planning stage because there was a lot of pushback on that, because it was a rezoning, not a buy-right usage, but that's... No, I'm sorry, I'm rambling.
I appreciate it, sir. And I, you know, I want the public to know, this decision ultimately lies with city council, you know? It's not a school board issue. We can tell you our needs, our concerns, but the ultimate decision to move forward with this will lie with city council.
Yeah, I definitely understand that, but I think, you know, from what I can see, I think there's a, there's a trying to be, a reach out, like you said, a little bit more, understanding of what your needs are. Do you want something? Because really, the question that is the resolution is, do you guys... Because like you said, the school board can vote this, or, sorry, council can vote, approve of a rezoning, and that is their prerogative. This is really just a, the reason why it kind of came down to, and I agree, maybe this should be more often, right, but was here, there's a cash proffer in place that's part of the ordinance of 4.2. Do you think getting the school board building for free, given to the city, I know there's some confusion on that, too, I shouldn't clarify, but given to the city and being able to, you know, reallocate funds, save some lease money, all the different things that we talked about, the benefits of it, is that out, is that better to you guys and the city than the cash proffers over eight years as COs come in? And that was really what we were trying to make sure that you guys agreed upon, as far as whether the city can handle it, infrastructure, there's a lot of other things we have to work through at city council, make sure that we're developing a good overall plan, but that was like the main concern. And I'm sorry to, I think someone asked a question, there's confusion about the, whether we're giving the building outright and you guys are owning it. We are giving the building outright, no costs, it's going to be transferred, 2.3 acres, the building. Where there, I think the confusion came in was the city is contemplating two different ways of handling the renovation. So the renovation could be done completely from the funds and done right away, and you guys move in and it's your building, there's no lease to it. Or they could try to amplify some savings by selling it to a third-party company that can take advantage of tax credits, renovate the building, and then lease it back at cost. So you're just basically deferring that renovation cost over a 10-year period until you eventually own the building after 10 years. So that was the two options, but as far as the building, that's not even, that's not us, that's just what they want to do and how they want to do it. On our side of it, we're giving the building free and clear. There's nothing, no contingencies, no lease or anything on that. I hope that clarifies.
Yes, sir. Appreciate that explanation, that thorough explanation. Thanks for your time.
Any other questions?
It looks like it. Board Member Riddick and then Board Member Slingla and Board Member Jenkins.
Okay, I have about four. Okay. My first question that I would like to ask you, is this particular parcel larger in size compared to the parcel of land that you all developed at Bridgeport?
Yes, yes, it is.
That leads me to my next question. With your buy-right usage, how many units? Do you, well, first of all, how many units are at Bridgeport? If roundabout, I know I threw you on the spot with that.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I wouldn't, I wouldn't, I, just to be clarified, we didn't, my company did not develop that particular site. That's just a buy-right usage of B2 example of how that could be designed, so I don't know those exact numbers. I believe it's over 500 or so in that one, and there's another phase to it that was zoned on the backside that's residential, not B2, but I can get those numbers for you, but I don't have time.
All right, and as a piggyback off of that not being included in my four, if it's buy-right, to be clear, that means you don't have to go and ask for any zoning variances, your buy-right have permission to do what it is you desire to do within that parameter?
Correct. So how that process would work, and I think Kevin White's gone, but he could clarify, but the buy rights are kind of verify. Buy-right means all we have to do is go through the planning department, and it has to fit the ordinance and the buy-right usage, and that's it. There's no public hearing and planning commission or city council.
Correct. All right. I am going to suspend my questions there because what it appears to me, Board Chair Howell and fellow colleagues, is that what we're faced with, if we say no and council say yes, we can possibly wind up with more. That's contingent upon what planning commission vote up or down, what council vote up or down. So we are pretty much, we can pick our poison for the lack of better terms. We can say we're going to deal with the overcrowding, we get a building out of it. SAO, if we say no and council say, hey, we're going to move forward, it's nothing guaranteeing that them receiving the building because they're going to receive the building anyway, from my understanding of the documents.
That is great. Our intention was to proffer the building to that as part of our, is that what your question was?
So in a nutshell, if we said no and council approved it, they can still receive the building, correct? Or is it, they're going to say, or they cannot?
They can, they can choose to do that. I do think it's going to be, I don't think that's their preference. If you say no, that you don't want the building, then I think what they're concerned, again, I'm talking about someone else's opinion.
I got you.
But is their concern is that that means that you guys don't want the building? So they might deny our proffer, because they can and the city council deny a proffer and just take cash. So if you're not, design no, their default probably would, again, I don't...
I got you. No, you're good.
They could default and say, we don't accept the building because the school board doesn't want the building, we just take the cash proffer. And then we'd have to amend our application.
So my concern is, Board, we are, we have to, we're being forced to pick a poison here. So I share the sentiments as Vice Chair McGee. I love to see our city grow. I mean, I love to see it, and my children are here and there in a school that is crowded as well. Transportation is a challenge, and that's why we provide the transportation, one of the reasons why we provide transportation. So Board Members, we just, win or lose, lose situation, the benefit is we may get a building, but we're putting extra stress on an already strained system. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Riddick. Ms. Slingla?
I think I'm going to forego my questions.
Okay, Board Member Jenkins?
Thank you. I just, I want clarity for a question that I asked earlier. I asked if we would get to own the building, and I thought I heard someone else say that the builder or the, you know, whoever didn't put it in there that way. So who is in charge or that can say the school board will be able to own the building?
So as far as what we're doing is, we are, we can't, I think Kevin Hughes clarified it or said it earlier, too, we can't give as a proffer anything to anybody other than the city of Suffolk. So as far as our proffer, I have, if I'm going to give anything, I have to give it directly to the city of Suffolk.
But you're not holding the hands of the city to say they can't give it to us?
Not at all. No, we, all we're doing is giving it to the city to be used as an administration building is how the proffer is written. What we can do as an applicant is dictate, like, for example, when we do a cash proffer for schools, that has to be allocated to school funds, right?
Right.
If we give a building for school administration usage, they have to give that building to the school administration usage. That's the power I have.
I just want, because that's been my whole question, because I thought this project was going to allow us to eventually own the building for, you know, and stop leasing or whatever, but it wasn't put forth that way at our just last conversation. So I wanted to hear it from you, that once the city has it, they can do what they want to do with it because it's theirs.
It's theirs completely. They can't do what they want to do with it because it is proffered, it has to be utilized for school administration building, but whether they...
Let us, allow us to own it?
Thing, or the owner, or however that is, that's up to them once we have it. The only thing is they will own it, and it has to be used as a school administration building.
Thank you.
Thank you. You got, okay. Board Member Slingla?
I will ask a question. Was there ever an opportunity to purchase, for you to purchase this property and then subdivide this portion out and sell that portion to the city versus doing it in exchange for the proffer?
Yes, we could do that. Well, hold on, let me back up. Can you state that again, just to let me make sure I understand?
So your goal is to convey the 2.3 acres with the building to the city in exchange for the proffers, correct?
Correct, correct.
So my question is, instead of using the price that the city pays for the building being the proffers, was there ever any discussion or is it an option for you, if you purchase this property, to subdivide that portion and sell it to the city for a fair price in the condition that it's in? And what would, what do you anticipate the value of that current building with the 2.3 acres not being fixed up without renovations to be?
So, okay, let me try to answer a couple of those. Sorry, apologize if I missed something. The first answer is, through the different options, before we realized that that building was a potential usage for the school administration building, the, we were putting it into that we had to pay a cash proffer and that we had to also renovate the building and then use that as a leased-out tenant for some time. We were looking for future tenants as far as office-based buildings, you know, renovate that building for that, which could be a sale or a lease to the school property. But in order to recoup the renovation costs and the cost of the proffers to not make the deal dynamics not work, I don't think a sale was really in, ever in our performas or our designs because kind of what we mentioned earlier with the school, the city manager said that they might take advantage on the lease opportunity. As the developer and the owner, if we weren't able to offset the proffers and that, like we talked about, we would then try to take advantage of the historic tax credits and go into like that situation. Is that kind of answer, which, is that... Sorry.
Do you have an estimate what you think that that building in the condition it's in, what that building would value at?
Yes, and that's what the, we had a third-party appraisal due for our application. I know there's some questions on that because there's assumptions of renovations. There's, it's a complicated, and I don't pretend that I know exactly how they come on all these valuations, but it is, and I think the confusion when they say, hey, there's some renovations and lease terms in that appraisal, it's because we're saying, how much is that valued to us if we owned it and renovated? Like, there's a lot of different moving parts to how that's appraised of what the value is. As far as the as-is building, I think, I don't, I don't have that part of it. The appraisal is a 6.7 million, I believe, as far as with those in there. So the answer to your question is, it's valued to us as a developer at $6.7 million with renovation costs and everything like that, and then being able to resell it with a lease back on a cap rate, we could make, we could make $6.7 million off of that. It would cost us probably somewhere around 22 or so, 25, 26 million between all, everything to, not 20, not, I don't know those numbers, sorry, but it would cost us money, obviously, to do it, and then the revenue from that would be that. Does that make sense? Sorry. I'm probably butchering it. I wish I had my appraisal here, he could explain it a little bit more detail.
Thank you, Board Member Slingla. I just want to thank you for stepping up to answer questions. If you watched the work session, this probably felt a little vulnerable, and I want to be clear, no one, I don't think anyone up here is angry or frustrated with Ryan Holmes. I don't, I wouldn't even say that we're angry. Ryan Holmes. I don't, I wouldn't even say that we're angry with city council. We're just frustrated that, yes, the S A O is a problem, but whoever you spoke with left out nine other problems that are crucial. And there are responsibility above all. So I thank you for your time. I hope you don't walk away here feeling like, you know, we're upset with you or anything. I wouldn't even say we're upset with city council. Just traditionally disappointed. Dr. Gordon has one point to make, I think, and then you are free to go.
Yeah, yeah. First, I just want to kind of echo some of Ms. Howell's comments and want to thank you, Mr. Edbauer, because I can share with the board that everything that he shared with you all today is consistent with what he shared with me. And that's part of the reason why I had suggested that he be here tonight, just in case. And I think, you know, I was stopping Mr. McGee because I didn't want him to get in trouble. But it might be the process where when we do have things that are happening, that could even be part of a joint meeting that a developer such as Mr. Edbauer should be there and actually should be able to give the other perspective. So it was a good question that Ms. Slingloff had asked because in the end, it's always going to be about, in this case, Ryan Holmes has to be able to get their return on investment. So the $6.7 million is after the land has, you know, the building has been purchased, the renovation occurs, now we got to get our money back. Like, that's kind of how they came up with the entire amount of the 22 million. And I think as you all remember, when the V dot building was originally discussed at one of our board meetings, joint meetings, I think it was right around 14.3 million dollars or so, and that was before the leak. So that's why some of the renovation stuff has to occur. So, you know, when I had the communication with Mr. Edbauer, he broke it down. This, what he has proposed is creative, right? It's not the traditional way that proffers work. Because in my communication to him, I echoed what all seven of you have said about where does the proffer money go in order to be able to take care of our overcrowding of schools? And that's why I wanted to provide that 1989, thank you, Terry Napier, perspective of what's been happening for 36 years. And so when you have a developer that's being really innovative and what Adam is trying to do, I can understand that. And then from the city council's perspective, they also understand that the school board has to be in support for the project to work, right? But, you know, we now going to probably have to take a look at some other options. And, you know, Mr. Edbauer, we hope, because I think what Ms. Howell said was so key, and what Mr. McGee and Mr. Riddick were talking about, we hope we'll be able to find some type of ways that for other projects that you guys are involved in, for us to find some way to communicate, right? And you've already shared with me that's going to be your goals. I just wanted to be able to say that publicly. And once again, thank you for being here.
Yeah, and I appreciate, you know, our conversations and I do genuinely mean that, genuinely mean it. Regardless of how this goes, I really hope this is a creative solution that we can really start making some headway on some innovative ideas. But I'm, in my company, they joke at me, I will go outside the box, right? And that's what I like to do. And I would love to be part of these meetings and solutions and finding some creative alternatives to help problems. Because I don't think, I talked to someone in the crowd that was opposed to this earlier, I think it was Anna. And, you know, I said, someone mentioned that it's like, you can't keep doing the same thing over and over again, expect different results. And that's kind of what you talked about in 1989. We got to figure out different ways to do it. We got to think of creative innovative solutions, how we can make win wins for everybody and not be, and really be able to listen to each other. So I appreciate you guys letting me come up here and I thank you for everything.
Thank you.
With that discussion being behind us, now, I, I mean, we have to have action on this. The choices before us again are resolution one, resolution three, or, and help me word this attorney, either no action or some sort of statement that says we don't support this project. So how, if it's a no, how would we word that in a motion?
You could either word it in the motion to say you do not approve of the River Band project.
Okay.
Or you could table it indefinitely, which would be akin to saying no.
Okay. So with that said, I will entertain anyone's thoughts on this or remember Riddick?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I've been trying to take this discussion in today. Getting it in a board member packet is one thing, but then listening to the presentation that was brought by the city, listening to the developer, listening to each of the voices that are speaking on this board. It appears that there is a conundrum here because none of these options, like Board Member Riddick presented, you know, it's picking a poison at this point. I don't see, on my perspective, how there's a yes vote or a support for this because every, every one of these ends up impacting the school division and our capacity issues. Every one of these makes the nine other problems that, Madam Chair, you talked about rise to the surface even hotter for us. And so, you know, I, I'm struggling because there's not a good option here.
Okay. Is there anyone that has a motion? Resolution one, resolution three, no, or table it? Those are our choices tonight.
Madam Chair, I move that we reject the options. We say no.
Okay. Board Member Riddickham has moved to deny support of this project. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. It was seconded by Vice Chair McGee. Is there any additional discussion about the motion to deny support or say no to this project? Okay, there being none, it looks like we're ready to vote. Board members, please vote. Board Member Dr. Riddickham?
Yes.
Board Member Fields?
Yes.
Board Member Jenkins?
Yes.
I'm sorry?
Yes.
Board Member Riddick?
Yes.
Board Member Slingloff?
Yes.
Vice Chair McGee?
Yes.
Board Chair Howell?
Yes.
Motion passed. Thank you, ma'am. And I believe we've come to the end of our action items. Under new business, there are several ordinances that are info only. I've encouraged you before to take a look at those, even though they're info only. Are there any of those ordinances that you have questions or comments about before they get to the action stage at the October 23 meeting? Okay. There being none, we now move to public speakers on non-agenda topics.
It is the intent of the school board to ensure that the affairs of the board be conducted in an open and orderly manner, that all persons desiring to address the board are afforded an opportunity to do so in the order in which they sign up to speak, that persons in attendance may observe and hear the proceedings of the board without distraction, and that the members of the board and board employees are able to transact the business of the board with minimal disruption. Any persons addressing the board shall, one, confine their comments to matters germane to services, policies, and affairs of the school board or Suffolk Public Schools. Two, refrain from words or statements which from their usual construction and common acceptance are construed as insults and tend to incite violence or breach of the peace. Three, refrain from obscenity, vulgarity, or other breach of respect. Four, comply with the time limit for public comment as set by the board, which can be up to five minutes unless the board through the exercise of its discretion decides to allow less than five minutes for public comment. Five, refrain from cumulative or repetitive remarks. And six, refrain from making any comment regarding any pending student discipline or employee grievance matters. The appropriate form for such matters is the applicable administrative hearing provided by state law or where appropriate court proceeding. Persons may not engage in disorderly, disruptive, or boisterous conduct such as, but not limited to, making noise, use of profane language, or obscene gestures, yelling, or similar demonstrations that interrupts or disturbs the peace and good order of the meeting. Persons addressing the board may deliver to the board or its clerk written materials including reports, statements, exhibits, letters, or signed petitions, and may also make use of any chart or graph during their verbal presentation. The school board welcomes comments from the public as appropriate. As board members will listen to public comments but will not comment, deliberate, or take action on them, the school board chair may direct the superintendent to investigate items and report back to the school board at a subsequent meeting. The chair or the presiding officer shall preserve decorum and shall decide all questions of public order subject to appeal to the board. At the request of the chair, a city police officer shall act as sergeant-at-arms at tonight's board meeting. That officer shall, under the direction of the chair or the presiding officer, have charge of the meeting area, the waiting areas, and corridors adjacent thereto, and shall prevent disorder or interruption of the business of the board. Our first speaker is Juliet Thompson regarding politics impacting children's learning.
Good evening. My name is Juliet Thompson and thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board, and also fellow community members. I come before you tonight as a parent and as a constituent who cares deeply about the future of all of our children here in Suffolk. I want to speak to you all about some three critical concerns. First, our children's education must never be used as a pawn in anyone's political game. Schools exist to educate, to empower, and to prepare every child for success in life. When decisions about curriculum, policies, or funding become more about scoring political points than about what's best for students, our children pay the price. And they deserve better than that. Second, no matter which party you run under, you represent, whether it be Republican, Democrat, independent, you were elected to represent all of us. Every family, every child in your district, regardless of their backgrounds or beliefs, they deserve your full attention and fair representation. If you only govern for those who share your personal ideologies, you fail to serve the diverse community that entrusted you with this responsibility. Third, I'm deeply concerned about the recent voting patterns on this board, especially by my own representative, Ms. Slingloff. Too often, the votes appear to follow the political rhetoric of national figures rather than the needs of Suffolk's children. I worry where this path leads. I worry what that means for my own children and for their classmates, students of color, students who speak other languages, students from immigrant families, and even Caucasian children. I want to ask you directly, Ms. Slingloff, because you represent my district. Do you care about how these children fit into your agenda? Do you care about whether they feel safe, valued, and supported in the schools you govern? If you do, we, your constituents, need to see that care reflected in your votes and your policies that you're supporting. If you do not, if you choose to continue to prioritize ideology over the needs of the children in your care, then I want to be very clear. Parents like myself, we will speak out and we will make our voices heard at the ballot box. Our children's future is too important to sacrifice it to politics. I urge you to put students first, lead with integrity, fairness, and courage. Our community, and most importantly, our children and their futures, deserve nothing less. Don't allow the people who donate to your campaigns dictate how you guys govern. All money is [bleep]. Thank you.
There are no more speakers. Okay. Thank you, Ms. Thompson, for coming before us. We have now reached the point, business by board members. So I will just go in a circle, or semi-circle, I guess, beginning with Board Member Riddick, so you can offer your five minutes worth of comments to the community.
Thank you, Madam Chair. First, I want to thank the board for the business that is conducted tonight. We had some heavy topics to deal with, and I am grateful for how everyone shared their thoughts and their concerns, not only about what they think, but keeping in mind their constituents and the students and the teachers in each of their boroughs. This conversation was difficult but productive, and I think that we were able to communicate the concerns that we have, particularly on the topic of the building that comes with property. I want to take a moment to again thank the music teacher from Colonel Fried Cherry, Ms. Hague, and her amazing class that came and blessed us, absolutely blessed us with the two songs that they performed tonight. That was probably the high point of my evening, listening to those voices. I'm so grateful for her talent and how she is cultivating talent and the youth in our school district. Again, I am, I am very grateful for the work that we are doing on this board together, board members. Dr. Gordon, I thank you as well. Tonight, there were some heavy lifts that had to be taken care of and appreciate the comments that you brought to the table as we had to discuss what we discussed. So with that, I will say good night and God bless. Thank you.
Thank you. Board Member Riddick?
Good evening, everyone. I want to begin by sincerely thanking the citizens of the historic Suffolk Borough for your continued support that you all have shown to me down throughout the years, even till to date as well. I want to say that on Tuesday, October the 7th, I had the privilege of hosting a outstanding town hall at Mac Ben Junior Elementary School, where we had residents from all over the city, not just the Suffolk Borough, come in and they weighed in on the discussions for all topic items such as receiving the V dot building. Everybody had an opportunity to see the proposal as it would be presented to us, and we had fruitful discussion. With that being said, we all recognize that the challenges our school division is facing, especially when it comes to overcrowding. Our students deserve learning, deserve a learning environment where they can grow, thrive, and feel supported. That starts with ensuring that we have the space and resources to meet their needs. That's why I'm encouraging city council to move forward with the purchasing of land for Elephants Fork Elementary School. That step isn't just about property, it's about progress. It's about investing in the future of Suffolk's children and ensuring that no student is left behind due to the lack of space and opportunity. We're talking about tonight, the River Band project. However, we have a new school that is desperately needed. Elephants Fork was built in the 1970s. It's one of our triplets. And we don't even own the land to begin to do site work to address the overcrowding at Elephants Fork. So I do share the sentiments of the chair. No one is upset. I am not upset with the developer. I think it's a great idea that people look at us, look at our city and see our city as I see it, which is a good thriving place to come, live, learn, grow, and raise a family. Unfortunately, our academic infrastructure is neglecting. And I'm asking and urging city council if they would really resume the practices that was in place when former city manager Selena Cuffey-Glan was in place. And we go back to building two schools at a time. Our city is growing. And the only human institution that does not grow and change with time, far as human living institution, is the cemetery. And right now, we're dealing with schools that were in existence from Nazman County and the city of Suffolk. And we're expecting that footprint to work for us, and that's not going to work. I do want to also give a great shout out to Booker T. Washington Elementary School, Dr. Brock, and the Enchanted Steppers. They came to the town hall, everyone, and if you have not seen it, I'm going to make sure it's uploaded to Riddick for Suffolk's Facebook page. They rocked the house. I mean, they did an outstanding job. Then we had the Lady Spartans come out, and they did an outstanding job. This is what it's all about, seeing our children thrive and succeed. As promised, Dr. Gordon and board members, I do want to share this with you. First and foremost, Dr. Gordon, safety and security staff, thank you all so much. I had the privilege to go to Akospa Safety Advocacy Training. And there I got to meet the principal of Columbine High School, who was the principal when the situation took place. And I shared some of our safety practices here, and we are spot on. I mean, we are spot on. And I just wanted to share that. I mean, we are spot on, and I just wanted to share that as well. Thank you all for doing a job well done. Thank you for leading Team SPS. As I shared at our town hall, we are Team Suffolk Public Schools. Dr. Gordon is our coach. We want a state championship. So I'm standing behind my coach as he leads Team SPS to higher heights. Thank you. Keep sweet and enjoy your day, and be safe in this weather.
Thank you. Board Member Slinglaw?
Thank you, Madam Chair. So I would be remiss if I didn't start out by addressing the comments this evening from Ms. Thompson, and I just want to thank you, first of all, for coming this evening and speaking to us as a board. I can't change my thought processes on how I stand on the board. I know that there's differences on the board, you certainly see it demonstrated, and for all of the citizens of Suffolk, we all come to the table with different preconceived ideas and different ideology, if you will, but that ideology governs each one of us, and that's what makes us different on this board. I would say that the driving factor, I believe, for all of us is a desire to do what's in the best interest of the students of Suffolk Public Schools. I can assure you for myself, there is no reason why I would ever subject myself to a duty such as this if it weren't to better our communities and to benefit the citizens and the families and the children of Suffolk and Suffolk Public Schools specifically. So I appreciate that. I am available to speak with anyone in my borough at any time if there's a question about any decision that I've made in my voting pattern. I'm more than happy to share my thoughts, and I am available for that conversation. So with that, I want to go back to the discussion tonight about the VDOT building that was up with the construction that the city has presented to us with the contractor that was here. You know, if anybody participated and or watched our joint meeting, our last joint meeting with city council, it was very clear when we left that meeting that we are in desperate need of funds for our schools, funds for our buildings, and that is a critical necessity, and we begged and pleaded, I would say, for the city to slow down with the development of housing, which brings more students and children into the schools. It's not that we are opposed to growth, it's not that we are opposed to the wonderful blessings that are taking place in our city because we're building a name for ourselves on a map here in Virginia, and people want to come to Suffolk, and we want that. But one of the greatest deterrents for people coming to Suffolk is the school system. So if we don't have the schools and the money in the schools to present what rightfully we at Suffolk Public Schools want to present to incoming families, and if the city isn't enabling us and giving us that opportunity to bring our schools up to par, then we're shooting ourselves in the foot here in Suffolk. So my hope is that city council will know that we want to partner with them. It is our goal to find a solution for these things, but we need to be a voice at the table and not just a rubber stamp for a decision that we don't necessarily like. So I encourage our city council members, when they have to make the decision for the rezoning of this property, please seriously consider our plea to slow down. Let's take care of what we have now. Let's take care of the schools and the students and the families that we have now. Give them the best that we can give them before we continue to heap more buildings of more houses and residential living quarters on top of that, bringing in new families. So thank you, everyone, for this evening and sticking with us. It's great to have a larger crowd. We're grateful you're here, and I hope you have a wonderful evening.
Thank you. Board Member Fields?
Okay, I'd like to say thank you to the board for the provocative questions and for providing information regarding the proposed project that we're facing. It seems like to me, from my perspective, it seems like we're looking at, we have an option on the table, but it's not one that's going to meet our needs for the future. There's no way that it can meet our needs for the future, so we do need to redirect. And I'm grateful that we had the vote and that we voted, that we would not support the development. I'm excited to announce that plans are being made for the groundbreaking ceremonies and a public information forum for the Northern Shores Expansion Project. I'm just really excited about that. That is getting started, and that is welcomed by the community. I'd like to say thanks to the public speakers who came out tonight to voice their opinions about the issues that they see that the board is facing. I always encourage constituents to come out and speak at these meetings, and to see you all come out and voice your opinions, that was really refreshing. Thank you. Thank you very much. I also would like to just say thank you to the board. I think we made some good progress. It feels good that we're working together, and it feels like we're working on the same team tonight. So thank you for that. And with that, I will say have a good couple of weeks, and we'll see you again at our next meeting.
Thank you. Board Member Jenkins?
Thank you, Madam Chair. As we conclude this evening's meeting, I want to take a moment to sincerely thank our superintendent, Dr. Gordon, and his staff of Suffolk Public Schools for all that you continue to do and your dedication and hard work. Your commitment of excellence, innovation, and student success continues to move our district forward in powerful ways. None of us are perfect, we don't always get it right, but we wake up every morning trying to do the right thing and make things right. To our parents and guardians, thank you for being our partners in education and for our ongoing support of our schools. To our community members, your presence, engagement, and encouragement mean so much. To all who attended our recent Cypress and Nansman Borough Town Hall, thank you, and I see some of you out in the audience tonight. Thank you for your input and your dedication. And to our precious students, you are the heartbeats of Suffolk Public School. You inspire us every single day to dream bigger, to work harder, and to never stop believing in what is possible. Thank you for, all of you, for being a part of this journey. Together, we are shaping minds, building futures, and strengthening our community. Have a wonderful evening. Go to the Peanut Fest and have a good time, and be safe.
Thank you. Vice Chair McGee?
Thanks, Madam Chair. Good evening, everyone. This week has been truly productive for me and inspiring. I had the chance to visit all schools in the Whittleville Borough, and I'm so thankful for the warm welcome I received. A big thank you to Dr. Brock at Booker T. Washington Elementary, Mrs. Mooney at Southwestern, Dr. Lee at Kilby Shores, Mrs. Wood at John F. Kennedy, Dr. Doyle at Forest Glen, and Dr. Brown at Lakeland High School. I also want to give a special shout out to Ms. Jessica Allen at SPS Transportation Office, Dr. Gordon. She is top-notch, had a great conversation, just very professional, everyone in that office. So I want to encourage all my colleagues, if you haven't visited Transportation Department yet, please do so. Thank you for opening your doors, giving me the tours of your schools, and showing me the amazing things happening in the classrooms and hallways. I also want to express my heartfelt appreciation to all the wonderful teachers, staff, and bus drivers, both those I had the chance to meet and those I didn't. Your dedication, passion, and care for our students make every tremendous difference every single day. What stood out most to me this week was seeing so much excellence, pride from the commitment of our educators and staff to the respect and determination of our students. It's clear that great things are happening here in Suffolk Public Schools. However, two weeks ago, I want to address something. Our division experienced a tragic event. A student was violently assaulted on their bus riding home from school, resulting in serious bodily harm. Just like so many of you, I am both disgusted and heartbroken by what happened to this child. No child or parent should ever have to experience this. My heart goes out to the family. While we all know bad things can happen in this world, we have a duty to do everything in our power to deter, prevent tragedies like this from ever happening. I also reach out to all of my colleagues on this board to express my concerns, and I'll be seeking their support to conduct a full in-depth review of our disciplinary processes, procedures for addressing student behavior on Suffolk Public School buses. Riding our buses is a privilege, not a right. I'm committed to ensuring full accountability for everyone involved. When I ran for the seat on the board, I made a promise to the people of Suffolk. I would be your voice, your eyes, your ears. That promise still stands. I work for you and only you. Consequences for bad behavior are non-negotiable. If a student cannot follow the rules and regulations set forth by SPS, they will lose their privilege of riding our buses. Our drivers deserve the same respect that all of our teachers and administrators and other staff are warranted. Anything less than that is unacceptable. Madam Chair, I would lastly like to ask, could I take a moment to offer the floor to Dr. Gordon to speak on what he can legally speak with this matter?
Thank you, Vice Chair McGee. So, Ms. McGee and I, we've had some conversations. I've had conversations basically with the majority of the board members up here. I want to thank, work from Mr. Privet, Dr. Brown, Dr. Brown's entire team has already been working hard on this investigation. I did have a chance to communicate with the mother of the student today, who was one of our current bus drivers, and she understood, as well as I understood, that there was not a lot that we could talk about because of current litigation. But she also was very, very happy that I reached out to show that we care. And that's both for her, because she misses driving in the bus and seeing her kids, but of course you have to take care of family first. So the conversations that Mr. McGee is referring to when it comes to our bus procedures, we're going to give a little bit of an overview of that, with the understanding that there is always going to be some flexibility that administrators are going to have. One of the things that Dr. Brown, our Chief of Administrative Services, says, that any time that we have any issue, if it's major or minor, we always use it as a learning experience to make sure that things are better the next time around. And those will be some of the things that we'll talk about at the next meeting. So we understand that people want to be able to learn more information, but you also have to understand their student privacy rights here, their student discipline rights here, and things are a part of a student's discipline record, as well as part of investigation, as well as part of HIPAA and FERPA and everything, because we have medical things that are going on as well. So I thank Mr. McGee for allowing me to say a few words about my communication with the family today, and this is something that we all will try to make sure that we take very seriously, like we do every day on everything, when it comes to the students and our safety of our staff on the bus, riding that bus, if it's 53, 65, or 77. Driving that bus is challenging, and we all know that from a person and from a team that we're still waiting on some of our new buses to even get here. But this is something that we know has brought a lot of attention to our school division for the wrong reasons, and these are the things that us as leaders, the people in this diocese, the people on our team, and our bus drivers and Transportation Department work very, very hard to ensure that we try to correct, and that we try to make sure that we take a look at ourselves, as well as evidence, and our staff and each other. So I definitely want to thank the family for accepting my call today, and thank you, Mr. McGee, for turning the floor over to me.
Thank you, everyone. I'm going to be brief, because Dr. Gordon reminded me football started three minutes ago. I first want to take a minute to thank Mr. Napier for taking it on the chin a couple times, as Dr. Gordon used you as an example in your many, many years of service. For how long, we've been looking at the projects that need attention. Seems I was in sixth grade when you started working for SPS. I also want to thank a couple ladies in my life who have poured into me this week, knowing that this heavy decision regarding the project was coming. One, who I consider a friend but also has a very visible presence in the community, just reminded me to pray and invoke my conviction. Another dear friend who used to be my principal, just reminded me that the battle is not against flesh and blood, but of spiritual warfare behind us. With that said, I would finally, in conclusion, just plead with city council to put some action behind your words. I'm grateful to have heard on the public scene and behind closed doors and phone calls one-on-one that they support us all the way. So the first actionable step in doing that is to reject the request to rezone that plot of land for the Riverbend Project, and then sidle up to us and figure out how we address the SAL office, Nansman River High School addition, and Elephants Fork within the next three years. The rest of you, if you will just take a look, there are information items at the bottom. There's a note about why we don't have our financial bills and payroll report this evening, and then there's an information item about the audit scope of work. With that, I conclude this meeting. Have a good evening.